I'm going to go ahead and call the Brooklyn City Council meeting to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Just one more. No, no, no. Get it stuck. Got a fail notice.
Technology.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Magrin Shaki.
Here.
Andy Selberts.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Aaron Barowski.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance and then opening remarks by Councilwoman Pucci.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, as we gather in this place, may you shower your blessings on each of us and prepare our hearts for the things that will be discussed. Lord, help us to be a blessing in the way we speak and act. We ask your guidance, wisdom, as we begin this meeting. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that impact our residents, and let our decisions be in alignment with what is best for our community. Amen.
Next up, we have minutes to approve from the December 12, 2022 meeting. Does anybody on council have any comments, questions? Make a motion that we approve?
Say it.
To approve the minutes, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Magrin Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selberts.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
I did want to give an update on the mayor, president of council, and everything from our organizational meeting that did take place last week, Tuesday, January 3. Council voted to hold off on the council president and pro tem elections until we fill the vacant council seat. Our meeting to vote on these two positions will directly follow our next regularly scheduled council meeting on January 23. Until then, I was appointed council president once Mayor Van Kirk was sworn in. We did also discuss council rules, and I will talk about those changes when I get to that legislation later on. Additionally, we elected three council representatives to a couple of our committees. Councilwoman Grodick was elected to the Planning Commission, Councilwoman Selberts to the Economic Development Committee, and I was elected to the Domestic Abuse Commission. We did also discuss the council vacancy position and agreed upon a timeline, as you might have seen posted on our website and social media and everywhere else we were able to post it. Letters of interest and resumes may be submitted by 4:00 p.m. this Thursday, January 12. Interviews will be conducted at special meetings on Tuesday, January 17, and 18, if needed, starting at 6:30. The appointment and swearing in is anticipated for the January 23 meeting. At this time, we will have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Don McMahon, 9515 Memphis Avenue. I've thought real hard of what I could get all the council meeting, all the council people for Christmas, and the fire chief here. So I got yous a little piece of paper for each one of yous, okay? I can't stay late tonight because I got a lot of errands to run, but here, I won't pass this off amongst all of yous. You can start right there.
Am I 231?
Thank you. No, one for each one of yous, and one for this guy right there, too.
Does anybody else from the public have, who wants to participate in public session?
Kelly Crawl, 10523 Manoa Avenue. I am speaking on my own behalf as a private citizen of Brooklyn. As you're aware, I live on Manoa, which is surrounded by green space. A large portion of that green space has been replaced by that hideous Amazon building, thus displacing some of the wildlife. Behind my home is what I will call the AG Woods, home to a family of roughly 12 deer, a few wild turkeys, and coyote. Not only do I hear them at night, but they have come up to my fence and stared my dogs. Lucky for me, my dogs look like giant wolves, and knock on wood, I have had no issues. Many sightings have been posted on Facebook along with photo and video proof of their existence. Residents remain vigilant when letting their small dogs out. Now imagine if we passed this chicken legislation. Chickens will not only attract these predators, putting our family pets and possibly small children in danger, but chicken feedings droppings will also attract unwanted rodents. Not to mention wild birds come into contact with backyard chickens more frequently than people realize, creating a pathway for pathogens such as Newcastle Disease and bird flu to transmit back and forth. We live in a suburb, not the country. Our homes are too close for farm animals. Who will residents call when they wake up to the leftover carnage from a coyote attack? And who is going to oversee these permits and coops to ensure they remain compliant with health and safety standards? Hopefully not the police; they are already spread thin enough as it is. Last night on my way home from Ridge Park Square, I was passed on bit off by a police car with its siren wailing and their lights flashing. I turned onto Tiedemann and was passed by three more police cars with their sirens and flashes going, followed by an ambulance. There was a fight at Walmart. Even with 24/7 police presence, people are still shoplifting and causing trouble up there. Every day, there are new reports of stolen cars, high-speed chases, theft of the Dollar Tree, Walmart, Ridge Park Square, cars being burglarized on the street, in driveways, and even at Amazon. I'm not one to pontificate while it's happening everywhere, because I don't live everywhere. I live here in Brooklyn, and I would like to know how the city plans on fighting this increase in crime. Is it on your radar? Otherwise, what are you going to tell residents when insurance rates start to go up due to all the thefts? Sorry, we need to let people raise chickens. At this time, I urge council to continue indefinitely with the bans regarding the proposed chicken legislation and instead concentrate on the safety of the residents. We need action.
Thank you.
Rob Slattery, 6600 Bussiris Drive. I've come to plenty of different meetings here, countless meetings, and I've gotten up at a lot of them, and I've asked questions, and most of the time, my questions are ignored. I'm really hoping that this kind of changes with the changes that have come with the administration here. First off, several items. First off, I'd like to know where the, what the status of hiring the three firefighters is. It's not something that can be delayed. It's very important. Our fire chief finally admitted that we do need this. Council has approved the money. I believe the test was already given, so I'd like a status update on that. I'm hoping that some of you are writing these questions down, and we'll throw your two cents in. Secondly, the building commissioner, this part-time position. I went on board docs, and it stated that the finances and the cost of this was listed in Exhibit A, and it was not. So I'd like to know what the cost of that is. Mr. Van Kirk, or Mayor Van Kirk, I will respect your position. Do you have any plans on naming a safety director? I'd really like to know that. I stated that with the past mayor quit, and she was too arrogant to admit that she didn't have the experience, and she should have named somebody. I believe it poses a conflict of interest with the Board of Controls as well. Next, I'd like to know if the interview process for the open candidates for the council is going to be in an open forum. I believe it should. I've complained before about council members, and I was told that council members are not considered employees of the city. They don't have to follow the personnel manual. So I, in my opinion, and I'm not an attorney, I don't believe that going into an executive session for personnel matter fits that. I think it should be done in open, whether, no matter how many interviews there are and applicants there are, the person that you're going to pick is going to represent all of us. I think we should know more about the candidate. I got here late for the meeting of the whole, and the consultant got up, and he made a comment about the new city town center and about the delays and everything, and he stated that there is a tornado shelter in the building. You guys planned for a tornado shelter in a building when we sat in countless meetings and asked for tornado sirens to protect the city. And you said, and Councilman Barowski said, "I'd rather take my chances," or something than the fact that they only happen every so often. So you're going to protect the administration of the city from a tornado, but you're not going to protect the citizens. That's really telling who's more important. Moving on to this, the chicken ordinance. Now, I've looked at, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, and I've looked at the zoning as well. New businesses, if the zoning passes, can't have a sign higher than nine feet. But if I have a two-story home, I can have a 15-foot-high chicken coop. So here's a scenario. I live in a one-story home. I have a six-foot privacy fence around my home. My neighbor has a two-story home. I'm going to look at nine feet of a chicken coop over my privacy fence. How does that make sense? I don't understand how you're trying to change the looks of the city when it comes to businesses and signage, but you're going to let something like this go down. This came up years ago, at least once, probably twice, and it was shot down because it was a bad idea, and it's still a bad idea. I mean, what would stop someone? I mean, I consider myself a fairly clever guy. You let these 15-foot chicken coops? What's to say a business doesn't want to rent advertising space on the side of a chicken coop? 15 feet high? Is there going to be an ordinance against that? I think you guys got, you have to get this together. You're wasting your time on things like this, like what Ms. Crawl said about the safety. Hire more police, deal with that. We're dealing with ice cream trucks and chicken coops. It's embarrassing.
Hello, everyone. Steve Herbig, 4402 South Amber Drive, Brooklyn, Ohio. Just wanted to throw my two cents in on the great chicken debate that we're all having, and mine isn't either for or against the ordinance. The ordinance itself is very poorly written. I did a lot of research, including other cities, and two friends, two personal, close friends of mine that raise chickens. I want to refer to Lakewood. Lakewood requires permits. They also, most importantly, require education. They require a class be taken through the Ohio State University Extension Program to learn how to take care of these animals. I'm a big animal advocate. My wife and daughter, my late wife and daughter, volunteered at the APL for over 18 years. And every, two weeks after Christmas, they see a glut of puppies that come in, and two weeks or a week after Easter, they see a glut of bunnies that come in, because people think they're cute and they're going to have fun with them. But chickens are a very different animal from what I've researched. For example, it takes 21 weeks for them before they can be able to start producing eggs, and they have to be raised in a minimum of three chickens. If you have one chicken, you think it's going to give you eggs, or two chickens, they're not going to give you eggs, and their life expectancy is greatly shortened, because, believe it or not, which I just learned, chickens are a very social animal. They also only produce for an average of three years. So what's going to happen to these animals after three years when they're no longer laying eggs? Not to mention that there is just a myriad of health and medical treatments that these animals deserve on a constant basis. So I'm hoping that we can amend this ordinance where we can educate the public on what's necessary to raise, maintain these healthy animals, and perhaps that'll scare a lot of people off, and we have less animal abuse. In addition, Lakewood also limits the number of permits that could be given out in their city. They're five times our size. They only allow 50 chicken permits in their city. There's a waiting list for the permits, from what I understand, and they also limit the number of permits permitted in each ward in that city. So there's a lot we could do to tighten up that ordinance, and before we send it to you guys to vote on whether or not we should have it. I think the education aspect of it is super smart. It can be done online. It's minimal cost, just a few dollars, and you can decide if you want the same program as Lakewood, but there's tons of different chicken education programs online. So hopefully you guys will consider that. Lastly, it's come to my attention, and I'm going to ask Kevin Tansky directly. Did you appoint your son to the Charter Review Commission?
No.
Okay. I would like to know if we're going to, in all of our future committees, allow relatives of people on our committees. It seems to me that it's nepotism at its finest. I know at the last Charter Review, there were issues with Attorney Ron Valbeer being on the committee because Councilman, his wife, Councilwoman Valbeer, was on this. I think with hundreds of qualified people, that picking someone of such a young age is irresponsible. It also reeks of nepotism, and I think, in my opinion, it jeopardizes legitimacy of the entire Charter Review Committee. It's the single most important committee in this city, the single most. We need to have people on there that understand how the city runs and have ways to improve the charter. I reached out personally to people that I know on the committee and was stunned with some of the answers. Some had, they asked me, "How do I locate the charter? How long is it? Is it boring?" I asked some people, "What are your ideas to improve the city through the Charter Committee?" Their answers were, "Never thought about it." So these are the quality of people that we're putting on our single most important charter. We can do much better than this. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, council. I would like to convey to council my concerns with the proposed legislation regarding residents being permitted to keep chickens and ask that they be taken into consideration. And I will apologize, because a lot of what I have to say is the same as what Mr. Herbig just spoke on, but in the almost 40 years that I've been a resident in Brooklyn, this issue has come before council numerous times, and each time, council has in fact recognized that this is not a good fit for our city. Keeping chickens in order to produce eggs is not an easy task. Research states that there's much work as well as expenses associated with the process. Their ability to produce eggs is also contingent upon a more stress-free environment, exercise, and a specific diet. Residents comment almost daily on hearing either fireworks, gunshots, or both, neither of which create a stress-free environment. Barking dogs can also cause stress. We have two dogs, one of which is a hound dog, that will definitely be provoked if my neighbor decided to have chickens. Will they ultimately be able to produce eggs on a consistent basis with these distractions? I would say definitely not, at least during the month of July with all the fireworks that are blown off. Additionally, chickens are only able to produce eggs for a maximum of three years, as stated before. After that, they become barren. What would the resident do with their chickens after that? It is illegal to slaughter them, and they cannot be killed and sold for human consumption. So will they be discarded secretly or just dumped off in the country somewhere? At that point, my opinion is it becomes animal cruelty, which is punishable by law. Another concern is that, at first, raising chickens may sound like a great idea and be similar to getting a puppy at Christmas or a bunny at Easter. Then a few months down the road, when it becomes too much work, or nobody has time to take care of them, or it's more expensive than anticipated, the puppy is brought back to the shelter, the bunnies are just let go in the wild. Neither of which is fair to the animal. My fear is that it could be the same with the chickens. Additionally, the proposed legislation states that enforcement would be handled within the Department of Public Safety, but yet there are no fines and/or penalties noted if any of the guidelines are broken or not followed. This includes more work for our police and fire department as well as our animal control department. With the uptick in crime within the city, is this really the best way to utilize our officer's time as opposed to fighting the more serious and ongoing crimes, such as stealing cars, other thefts, and the overall safety of Brooklyn residents? There is also no mention in the proposed legislation that reflects a permit would be required for a coop or a cage if it is not permanently attached to the ground. The chickens will most likely be prey for other animals if the coop is not secure. Residents need a permit to have a shed for garden tools, but no permit for living animals? Why wouldn't we require a permit for a coop in order to ensure not only the safety to the animals, but also as not to cause an eyesore or additional problems for neighbors residing next to those who chose to keep the animals? Some homes in the city are as close in proximity as this podium to where council sits. The odor and fecal matter would definitely be problematic if not kept up with by the owner as well, especially during summer months. Permits and inspection to ensure the coops are properly constructed and maintained should absolutely be required and be overseen by our building department and the director, again, creating more work. However, at this time, the position is currently part-time. There's also been an increase in the coyote population within our city. While I do understand that it may currently be their mating season, it would add additional worries to residents with small pets, knowing that they are at even more risk due to the attractions of chickens and their eggs to the coyote. And what if there were small children playing outside in the yard? Would the children mistake the coyote for a dog? Can we be assured that the coyote would not come after the children, as they can be aggressive, thinking possibly they would be a threat in their attempt to get to the chickens? The list of concerns goes on and on. However, I currently feel that the negative outweighs the positive. In closing, I would ask the council to reconsider passage of this legislation at this time and propose that, if possible, this is added to the ballot for the residents to vote on. Brooklyn needs to do what's best for Brooklynites, not try to copy, paste, and rubber stamp what other cities are doing or go along with and what appears to be trendy at the moment. There are many other pressing issues within our city with a higher concern at this time that need attention. Thank you for your consideration.
Anybody else for public session? We will now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. I will start this evening with the Public Safety and Environmental Committee. Just to let everybody know, both ordinances, 2022-32 regarding the apartment complex security as well as ordinance 2022-44 regarding chickens in the city are both referred to the Public Safety Committee, so we are not voting on them tonight. They are in abeyance, and due to the vacant position, we are waiting. We do not have committees set up for this year, so we're waiting on that to be filled, and then we'll pick a date probably for later in January or early February for that committee. So I just wanted to give an update, since there were a lot of comments about the chicken ordinance tonight. Next up, we will have the Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
The youth volleyball league for the spring season is open for registration starting January 9 through February 6. Grades three to four coed and grades five to six coed. Players must be Brooklyn resident or student attending school in the city limits. Resident fee $60. Teams will practice once during the week at the Brooklyn Middle School Fieldhouse. Games will be played at home and away, sites on Saturdays at Fairview Park. North Homestead in Middleburg Heights. Practice begin the week of March 6. Games begin March 25, tenatively. Volunteer coaches are needed for all leagues. Please let us know at registration if you are interested. Register online at www.brooklynrec.com or call the rec center at 216-351-5334. Next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 24, in the rec center meeting room at 7:00 p.m. Nick concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Planning Commission, Councilwoman Sue Grodick.
Thank you. Planning Commission met on December 7 to consider the following items. We approved a request for L3 sign and image for monument sign for a one-foot digital display at Surveyo at 4500 Tiedemann Road. We approved a request for Archer Sign Corporation for a sign package for TJI Fridays at 10320 Cascade Crossing. That is just because the whole chain is going through an image update. We approved a request for Adam Signs for a sign package for Walmart at 1000 Brook Park Road. We approved a request from CSCO Imaging Company for two 40-foot monument signs for Well Now Urgent Center Care and Aspen Dental at 4630 Ridge Road. And we approved a request for McGregor Pace for a similar to a medical office use for an adult daycare in a general business district at 7570 North Cliff Avenue pending the Board of Zoning Appeals approval. Our next meeting, I'm sorry I didn't have it pulled up, is Wednesday, February 1 at 6:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have School Board Liaison, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. I've reports from two meetings. The school board met on Tuesday, December 20 in Room 173. They approved minutes, financial statements, employment issues, hiring, resignation, approved several revisions to some job descriptions. They accepted a donation from the National Arts Honor Society of 60 pairs of gently-worn uniform bib trousers from the Music Boosters, or to the National Arts Honor Society fundraiser. And they also accepted the resignation of Treasurer Colleen Aholt, effective February 28, 2023. The school board had their organizational meeting on Tuesday, January 3. Mr. Rocky Neal was elected president, and vice president is Mrs. Bonnie Barcheck. The committee assignments for 2023 are facilities, Mr. Slattery; legislation, Mr. Neal; policy, Mrs. Barcheck and Mr. Neal; student and academic achievement, Mr. Singer and Mrs. Barcheck; liaison to the Recreation Board, Mr. Slattery; technology, Mr. Neal; finance and audit, Mr. Singer and Ms. Crawl; and wellness committee, Ms. Crawl; curriculum and professional development, Mrs. Barcheck and Mr. Slattery; liaison to city council, Mr. Slattery; liaison to the Domestic Violence Committee, Ms. Crawl. At this organizational meeting, they approved numerous policies, procedures relating to their organizational process, affirming their meeting dates and times, which are the first and third Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., naming their legal council. There's like a whole slew of these that they reaffirm every year, including that the superintendent is the spokesperson for the board, authorizing the treasurer to pay the bills and sign the purchase orders, authorizing the superintendent and treasurer to open and tabulate bids, and they did approve their 2023 tax budget, which had a total for all funds of $24.2 million. They also approved an employee benefit schedule for new and renewed employment contracts after January 1, 2023, and approved the Brooklyn High School Program of Study for 2023-2024 school year. The next school board meeting is Tuesday, January 17 at 6:00 p.m. in Room 173, and that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Domestic Abuse Commission. January is National Stalking Awareness Month. According to the Journey Center for Safety and Healing, stalking often co-occurs with domestic violence and does not just occur when a partner is leaving a relationship. Victims are often stalked while still in a relationship with a controlling partner. 81% of women who are stalked by a current or former husband or cohabitating partner were also physically assaulted by that partner. If you or someone you know needs help, know that you are not alone. The Journey Center is there for you when you are ready. You can call or text their hotline 24/7 at 216-391-43357. And next up, we have the Legislative Update, Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, my legislative update will be the topic of some of the plans for the agenda for the General Assembly this upcoming year. On the agenda for the Ohio House and the Senate will be topics such as medical marijuana reform, the overhaul of the State Department of Education, income tax changes, a discussion on a flat tax, to addressing our state's current usage of the death penalty and abortion rights. I will definitely be keeping residents of Brooklyn updated on these topics, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Board of Zoning Appeals, Councilwoman Sue Grodick.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals will be meeting Thursday, January 19. Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals will be meeting Thursday, January 19th at 6:00 PM via a Zoom meeting. There will be a link that is available for residents who would like to tune in. On their agenda are things that you just heard me talking about in planning. The first is a request for Archer Sign Corporation for a variance of an additional fifty-eight square feet for signage for TJI Fridays at 10320 Cascade Crossing. Also, as part of that sign package is a variance for seven extra signs to the allowable one on the building face for the signage for TJI Fridays. A request from CESCO Imaging for the variance for requirement for freestanding signs that are permitted when the building is back from ROW, a minimum of twenty-five feet, the two monument signs for Well Now Urgent Care and Aspen Dental at 4630 Ridge Road. And a request for a thirty-five-foot variance for the minimum requirement of seventy feet from a residential zoned property for a monument sign for Well Now Urgent Care and Aspen Dental. And the last one is a request for additional freestanding sign variance to the maximum for of one for Well Now Urgent Care and Aspen Dental. All three of those variances can be seen on board docs. The TJI Friday signs can also be seen on board docs. It sounds a little extreme, seven extra signs for a variance of one. But if you look, they're very small signages that are in their windows, including their address. So, all of those are, you can see the actual plans on board docs if you'd like to see it before the January 19th meeting. And that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you. The final committee we have is the Committee of the Hall. We met at 6:15 tonight. We did have two guest speakers, the first being Mike Malice, who is the city manager for the city of Bedford. And he came to speak to council tonight regarding an ordinance that is on first reading, but administration is looking to adopt by suspension of the rules tonight, authorizing the mayor with the city of Brooklyn, as well as the city manager from Bedford, to enter into a service agreement regarding our building commissioner position. And so, he talked to us and answered questions that council had, gave us a little bit more of an update on it. So, including the salary for the position will be between one hundred and ten and one hundred and thirty thousand. Brooklyn, the employee, the person selected will be an employee of the city of Bedford, but Brooklyn will be invoiced quarterly based on the days that this person worked, the hours worked, and for half of the benefits. And then additionally, like I mentioned, fielded questions from council. The second guest we had tonight was Jason Noldy, who we've heard from in the past. He had come to talk to us about two different topics, the first being the fire station water issue, which we have discussed in the past here at council. The outside water is allowing, outside wall is allowing water to seep in. So, after investigating the issue a little bit more and coming up with a couple of recommendations, their final recommendation and what administration is looking to move forward with is doing a re-tuck point, pressure washing, and applying a new water repellent to the CMU, new flashing at windows, and additional control joints, and removing the exterior drywall to add air barriers and add weeps. And so, this should help facilitate the, getting the fire station back into a working order, so we don't have water coming in, and is on the agenda tonight under ordinance 2023-3 at a cost of two hundred and fifteen thousand. The second thing that Jason talked to us about tonight was the city center project. There is an additional one-month delay due to the electrical equipment. They were told by the supplier that the equipment was on time up until the time it was about coming to, I believe, to install it or the latest update. And so, there is a one-month delay. So, the furniture install should now be on March 23rd. It was originally scheduled for about February 23rd. All ordinances that are on third reading tonight or that administration is looking to pass with suspension of the rules were recommended to be passed tonight. And I'll give a little bit more update as we discuss the ordinance before the vote or with first reading. Committee of the Hall always meets at 6:15 prior to regularly scheduled council meetings, and all are welcome to attend. Next up, we have Report of Council. We begin this evening with Councilwoman Tansky.
Well, I was gonna be quiet tonight, but I can see that they can't handle. So, we'll start off with the first one. Kelly Kroll brought up about problems at Walmart. First question is going over to Chief Melkey. How many calls and how much babysitting are we doing at Walmart crime-wise? And how many police officers are we down in the city? Are we short?
I don't know the number of calls off the top of my head. We do have a new side job that Walmart pays our police officer to sit up there from eleven-thirty in the morning to eleven-thirty at night. That's just recent.
Has crime been up at Walmart as it rose?
I don't know if it's any more or any less, but they, they, they wanted a police officer up there, and we're, right now, we're able to provide that officer. Shoplifting has always been an issue up at Walmart. I do believe we did have a fight up there, which was the other day. I don't know exactly what day it was. People were arrested. So, what was the second half of your question, Councilman?
Well, anytime a resident brings up anything with safety or...
Are we down any officers?
Yeah, are we down officers? How many are we down?
We have one retiring next week that we're in the process of trying to secure.
And we currently have how many on staff?
Counting myself, thirty-five.
As stated, thirty-five for the last ten years. Aren't we down?
No. Actually, it's higher than we've been in the last ten years.
It's higher?
Yeah.
My second question is, the sirens were brought up again by Mr. Slattery. So, I don't know if this question has to go over to the mayor, maybe to the mayor first. Where are we at with these sirens? Has the mayor, former mayor Gallagher brought anything, where are these sirens going, what we are doing to fix them, what company we are getting estimates? Do we have any kind of information?
I've not had conversations about that yet. I can tell you where we're at, though. It was about thirty thousand dollars. Best guesstimate without those guys climbing up on the pole and taking a look at the sirens. So, I believe that we are holding in abeyance and letting you guys decide. That's something you guys wanted to fund, so.
Something we should probably bring up in the Safety Committee? Put that on the agenda. All right, over to Mr. Butler. What is the ages for anybody to be on committees in this city? Is there any age limit? Or I should say, any starting age?
I don't know of any. There might be some restrictions on certain boards, commissions that would require them to be electors, which I suspect would mean that they would need to be at least eighteen. But other than that, I'm not aware of any.
Is there any problem with somebody being related to anybody either on council or working for the city to be on these committees?
Not that I, certainly not in the case of the Charter Review Commission, Councilman, if that's what you're responding to. The Charter Review Commission is advisory under the charter to city council. It makes recommendations to city council that council must deliberate over and eventually decide whether to turn into ballot initiatives for the public to consider. But those are recommendations under the charter, exclusively under the charter. Nothing in the Charter Reviews Commission work would represent an undue influence over a council member. No council member, I suspect, under those circumstances, could unduly influence a Charter Review Commission member, because those, the Charter Review Commission's work is advisory only. There's nothing that affects the rights of any citizen, person, company whatsoever in what the Charter Review Commission does. It's just advisory.
Okay. To address Mr. Herbig, which bothers me a little bit. He went out and pushed that school letting to educate our very strong young minds in our school system, which I agree one hundred percent. So, I don't know what the problem is, taking these very strong educated minds, and Councilwoman Grotick is educating them, taking them out of that school and putting them right into city politics or city business. What would be more better than taking your kids that are graduating from this school system that our taxpayers' money is paying the system, and I agree a hundred percent, and I agreed with the, with the pushing the levers, as Herbig said, he went out, got on me for it. Now, I'm taking them young minds, and you should be all for this, Mr. Herbig, of taking those same minds that you're pushing and putting them in here. Maybe that's the start of it. I believe the younger population, especially from the city, should sit on these committees and get involved. We surely don't have them out here. We got one. So, what is the problem taking the younger generation and getting them involved? Maybe they can come up with something on any one of these committees, from their young minds or their young intelligence, and educate us? Because I believe that whether it be the city, state, county, I'd like to see more in the White House, or I'd like to see him too, and on Congress. But again, it's politics, hard to get elected in those positions. Got to have money, number one. So, when I hear those comments of he being too young, or anybody being too young, or never too young to learn, and are you ever too young to bring up opinions and comments on these committees, or on council? So, you should be happy I'm doing this. Not against, should be happy. And I would hope that there would be more of the young generation, especially from our schools, to get involved in the city business. So, I, it just bothers my mind when I hear anybody saying they're too young. No, they're never too young. There has been mayors throughout the United States, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, get elected. Had to get elected, get involved. So, when I see anybody wanting to read the charter, wanting to get involved in Planning Commission, or wanting to get involved in any of these committees, when I see them reading, I don't have a problem with that. Matter of fact, I encourage you. Because it takes a whole body, whether it's old generation, in-between, or young generation, to get involved, to make changes. And that's how you get changed. That's how you make your cities better. That's how you make your neighborhoods better, by getting involved and getting educated. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sue Grotick?
Thank you. I too would like to address some of the public comments before I begin my prepared report. I do really appreciate hearing concerns from our residents, and especially about what we're now calling the chicken ordinance. I value hearing what the residents think. I would like to remind some of the residents that this was brought to us by, well, brought to Councilwoman Burowski by residents. So, that was a concern and an interest of those of us that live in Brooklyn. Maybe not me, and maybe not some of the people that we heard from, but it was an interest. And I do believe that times change, and we owe it to residents, if they have an interest in something, to at least consider it. And by having what I consider a very skeleton ordinance come before us, and immediately upon first reading have it recommended to go to committee, that shows that it certainly is not an ordinance that we were prepared to vote on, even at third reading. And it is something that I feel it's important when residents come to us, that we give it some time, even if we, previous councils had heard about it in the past. So, I appreciate hearing from the residents that came and spoke about it tonight. I will say, Mr. Herbig, I really appreciate your comments, because I have not begun to research the issue very much, because it is being sent to committee. So, I do appreciate, Ms. Whitey, also, hearing some of your research. If it isn't too much, if you had things that were prepared and could just forward them to my email, I would love to have that in print, so I could read it and think about it a little more. I would really appreciate it. I don't know if I will be returning to the Public Safety and Economic Committee. I was on it. Environmental. I was on it previously, but as you've heard, all of that's going to be pushed back a few weeks now. So, if you have anything that you could send to me, I would greatly appreciate it. But I just wanted, wanted to make sure that you understood at least how I felt about this ordinance in particular. So, along with that, the prepared remarks I had were, "Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. Already 2023 is bringing several unexpected changes to Brooklyn, along with many expected changes to our city government." I would like to congratulate Katie Gallagher on her new position with the county as the Deputy Chief of Operations in Community Innovation. I think our city saw substantial growth in innovation during her seven years as mayor, and I'm not surprised that others were watching her accomplishments. So, I wish her the best of luck, best wishes, not really luck, she doesn't need luck, best wishes on her new position with the county. And as we find ourselves filling a few unexpected positions this year, I really hope to do my best to ensure that our city council has a smooth transition. Obviously, as you've heard several times tonight, there are positions that will be filled, positions from mayor to council president, pro temp committees. A new council member will be joining us, and I hope to make that, all those transitions as smooth as I can help. I'd also like to thank my fellow council members for the opportunity to continue serving on the Planning Commission. That is just something I feel very passionate about for our city, and I appreciate all of them allowing me another year on that commission. On our agenda tonight, we have the third reading for many of the ordinances that will be updating our zoning codes. This will most likely be on the May ballots. I hope that any resident who has a question about any of these ordinances will seek the information well before the May election. The, many residents, many parts of their administration have worked for about eighteen months now, and if you have any questions, there is a wealth of information available. I would like to extend, on a sadder note, extend a heartfelt condolence to Debbie and Chip Luwanawanzu on the death of their son, Josh. Josh graduated from Brooklyn High School, and Debbie worked for many years in the before and after-school care program. Also, heartfelt condolences to Josh's sister, Brianna. If you follow marching band at all, you may remember that Brianna was the, very active in marching band and was the majorette, I think that's called, during her senior year. Also, I would like to share some sad news, that longtime math teacher, Mary Kathy Linger, lost her battle, her long battle with cancer last week. If you were a student or had a student in Brooklyn High School over the past thirty years, you probably recognize that name, Mrs. Linger. Mrs. Linger was a very popular teacher with parents, with students, and with staff, and we were very sad to hear of her passing last week. And on those two sad notes, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Councilman Seltzer.
Thank you. Good evening. Hopefully everyone had a good Christmas and New Years with family and friends. I would like to urge the Safety Committee, try to schedule a meeting as soon as we can. Hopefully we can get forward and discuss enacting Chapter 764 to apartment complex security. One thing I want to piggyback off of Councilman Tansky's comments about trying to get youth involved in local government, back in my time, since I'm the old person on council here, age-wise. Went to school with one guy named Rick Hasman, his brother Ron, back in the late 70s, was actually running for mayor. He's both, both a gentleman or a product of Brooklyn. So trying to get youth involved, I wholeheartedly agree with Kevin. It's a good idea. He hit it spot on. It's nice to see all the faces, but especially if there's young ones here, at least try to get some kind of future, get them involved with it. So to say if a person's young or too young, if they're showing an interest, let them, let them try at least. That's more than others just sitting on the sidelines. One good thing coming up in about a month and a half, Brooklyn Athletic Boosters and Post-Prompt Committees are holding their night at the races on February 25th at the UAW Hall in Chevy Boulevard. Doors open at 5:30, dinner at 6, races start at 7. Tickets are $30. You can contact the following: Kelly Supak at 216-978-8453, Michelle Hillcue at 216-674-3223, and Angie Helmick at 216-536-4457. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pucci?
Thank you. Good evening. I too would like to offer my condolences to the family and friends of Josh Luwanawanzu. It's always sad when we lose a family member, but I think it's especially tragic when a young person is lost. You know, family loses their child and sibling, so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. My congratulations to former Mayor Gallagher on her new appointment, and I wish her all the best in her new position, and all the best to Mayor Van Kirk as he assumes his new position. As I previously mentioned, anything I can do to help, I'm happy to do. I'd like to thank the Service Department for the great job they do putting up our Christmas decorations and lights. I know that they take a lot of pride in trying to make our community look nice over the holidays. And also a big thanks to all of our employees, service, fire, police, and anyone else who had to work over the Christmas holiday during that terrible storm we had. I know that those were some very trying and brutal conditions. And thank you also to our residents who decorated their homes for the holiday, making our community a little brighter. We have some very talented and dedicated decorators. I know we didn't have the contest this year, but Chief Milkie, I read an interesting article about what Parma Heights does, I don't know if you saw that. They have their police department, who are patrolling the evening and overnight, select the winners of the holiday decorating contest. And they have a few different categories that they come up with finalists for. They have Christmas Vacation, Classic Christmas, and Best in Show. They have the afternoon, and I know that we have a different scheduling, but they do the afternoon and the night shift select, they all vote on it to come up with the winners. They have a local business who donate some gift cards, and they said the goal is for the holiday light decorating contest to not only reward residents seeking bragging rights, but also to provide a positive community policing experience. So maybe it's something we can think about for next year, or this year, really.
Don't do show up at the cop talk.
Okay. I agree that if you have to pick between the two, that's more important. The Community Improvement, Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation will have their organizational meeting, and under the bylaws, we meet the first Monday in February, so that is Monday, February 6 at 5:30. It is going to be via Zoom. There is a vacancy due to the passing of Debbie Tomusco. If anyone is interested, please contact Jeremy Rowan. A couple comments on some, or one comment on something from our organizational meeting. It's addressed in 2023-4, and it's only on first reading this evening, but one of the proposed changes is deals with public participation, and at the organizational meeting, I did vote no for this. Basically, it breaks out the public's time to participate in our meeting into two different time periods. In the beginning of the meeting, if this passes, it will be limited to address council only on agenda items that evening. Then, if the public would want to address us or say something for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, they have to wait to the end of the meeting for that opportunity. And I voted no, because I didn't see any benefit to changing the public comment to the end of our meeting. And I know that this may not be the intention, but I believe it's an attempt to control what is said at the beginning of the meeting. And as far as I'm concerned, as long as the public adheres to our rules of decorum, I'm against trying to limit or police what they have to say and when they can say it. We may not always like what is said, but it's their right to say it, and I want to hear what residents have to say. I also think it is going to be potentially confusing and also inconvenient for residents to split up the public comments. Ordinance 2023-1, which is on our agenda this evening, would establish us sharing a building commissioner with the city of Bedford, and honestly, I'm very torn about this. Unfortunately, we're in a situation where we've advertised for building commissioner, the last couple times we've advertised for a building commissioner, there aren't enough people out there with the qualifications. Personally, I really want to see us have a full-time building commissioner, and I think it's important to have a director here full-time who is in charge. I'm still kind of thinking about which way I'm going to go on this, but like I said, I'm very torn on it, because I don't want to see us have a part-time building commissioner. Regarding some of the public participation, Mr. Butler, could you give us an update of what is the status of the Charter Review Commission? We were asked to provide names earlier than we normally do, because we normally are providing our names in the beginning of January, so that they could begin right after January 1st. I know I haven't seen anything, I haven't seen any public notices. Could you provide us with an update?
The commission is scheduled to have its organizational meeting on Monday, the 23rd at 5:00 p.m. I've notified the commission members of that, and I think public notice either has gone out or is about to go out with respect to that, maybe already on board tabs, I'm not sure. But that's 5:00 p.m. here, Monday, the 23rd.
Okay, thank you. And could someone please send council the list of the commission members? Thank you. And with all due respect, the Charter Review Commission is not advisory, it's in our charter that council is mandated to put on the ballot anything that they propose to us. If you have a different opinion, I'm interested in it.
I most certainly do.
Okay.
And I'm happy to provide it tonight, or however you feel that that's important.
Okay. Well, I think since it was brought up, it would be important for us to hear.
Yeah, and it's not, I'll address another aspect of the public comments tonight with respect to the Charter Commission, but explicit language of the charter says that such commissions shall review and recommend to council, not less than 90 days prior to the next November election, any alterations, revisions, and amendment to this charter, as in its judgment seem advisable. There, the language that follows that says, "Council shall submit to the electors any such proposed alterations, revisions, or amendments to the charter at the next regular November election." But I do not believe that the first sentence requires council, in fact, I think it makes the commission advisory only, requires council to adopt wholesale all those recommendations. They are, the word "recommend" would not be used if they were something more than just recommendations. And so my opinion on the matter is that council has the ability to debate those proposed alterations, revisions, and amendments to the charter, and then decide which ones go on the ballot and which ones don't. I think, I think an action by an elector to try to force council to place verbatim any of those proposals would fail. It's two words, two operative words, one is recommend, the other is propose. And I don't, I think the Charter Review Commission is advisory as a result.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. I think this is, and I'm not saying I favor one way or the other, I'm not taking a position. I remember when this went on the ballot, and I think it's a situation of sloppy wording, because that was the intent at the time of those on the Charter Review Commission. But anyways, we can talk about that another time. Also, the idea was mentioned to have our interviews for the vacant council seat in open session versus executive session. I don't know what your opinion is of that. I guess my question is, are we still good going into executive session? If that's what we choose?
Yeah, the Open Meetings Act, and the case law that follows the Open Meetings Act most certainly applies to council deliberations over the appointment of council members. And the Open Meetings Act obligates public bodies, as you know, to deliberate in public in all matters, except for those that are accepted from that obligation. And the Open Meetings Act provides exceptions by way of what's known as executive session. Executive session is an opportunity for council members to meet behind closed doors outside the public view with whomever they wish to meet for very explicit, discreet purposes, one of which is to consider the employment of public officials. And the selection of a council member to fill a vacancy is, according to the jurisprudence that's been handed down under the Open Meetings Act, the employment of a public official. So you do have the opportunity to meet in executive session, interview candidates, to discuss candidates. You simply may not vote in executive session, you've got to emerge from executive session before making an official action.
Thank you. And I just want to share that Mr. Slattery mentioned to me last week that it was the city of Brook Park conducted their interviews in open session and livestreamed it, so I'm just throwing that out there. And lastly, on the chickens, thank you everyone who shared information about that tonight. I agree with what Councilwoman Brodick said about considering what residents are proposing, and I have no problem doing that. I was on council when we have considered this in the past. I try and have an open mind, I think I do have an open mind, but I know that there are some concerns about having chickens. So if you can attend the safety meeting, I would encourage you to, but I also, you know, would like to say, I know we're all busy and everything, and if you can't make it, I appreciate that you shared all the information with us this evening. And finally, Chief Paul, when it's under the directors' reports, could you provide us with an update on the status of the hiring? Thank you very much. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Browski.
Thank you, Council President. First thing is, I'd like to wish the residents of Brooklyn a Happy New Year. Second, I'd like to wish our recently sworn-in mayor, Ron Van Kirk, the best of luck this year in managing the city. Thankfully, we do have some great department directors and chiefs to help with the transition. And third, I'd like to wish our former mayor, Ms. Gallagher, luck just as well in her new county position. Tonight, we will be voting as a body in hopes of battering our community with the zoning update. This has been a topic of discussion and debate for the city administration, city council, its residents for almost two years. I've researched the pros and cons to zoning updates and the overall impact to communities trying to go with, grow with economic prosperity while welcoming new residents to their cities. I will be supporting this ordinance with a yes vote. When it comes to the chicken legislation, Ms. Pucci and Ms. Grudic are absolutely correct. This was a rough draft. The very first reading, we decided that we were going to have a safety and environmental meeting, that we could talk about it, work things out. I talked to Kevin Butler about this, and he helped us model it around seven cities, including Seven Hills, Strongville, Brea, Independence, Lakewood, Cleveland. They all have chickens, so we're going to sit here and tell all of them they've got it wrong? I'm sorry, that's just not how it works. And since, you know, people talk about what we're accomplishing and so forth, last week I had a wonderful conversation with the chief about the cars being broken into and the rise in crime and statistics, and he told me that the biggest increase is the car windows being smashed, cars being stolen, that the overall other crime aspects, unless I'm wrong, have not risen. Thank you, you just as so added there. So also, that takes care of that. The other thing about multitasking, which is what we all do up here, is while I'm talking to him and talking to the chief about staffing and other incidents, I had a great conversation with Jeremy today and Jack from the Rec Center about discussions of forming and implementing in the coming months and year, a sizable community garden. Be it down in Memorial Park, Jack's got a few ideas, and again, just like the chicken legislation, this is preliminary conversations. There's going to be more discussions, and we'll go from there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I hope that everybody had a great holiday season and New Year. I was able to rest and relax, and I hope that each of you were able to as well. I do just want to echo a few of my fellow councilpeople's remarks regarding, congratulations both to our outgoing, former Mayor Gallagher on her new role with the county, as well as Mayor Ron Van Kirk, and I look forward to working with you in this new role, it's been great working with you over the last five years. I do want to echo Councilman Tansky and Seltzer's remarks about something that was brought up tonight regarding age. This is something near and dear to my heart, because I get comments about my age all the time, and I have gotten it since I first got involved in the community several years ago, and each time that I knock on doors, I get comments about it as well. And I think it's important that we look to grow young people, and we look to help young people become better, become more experienced, and give them that chance to get involved in their community, and to help us shape the community for the future, because at the end of the day, we want the young people to stay in Brooklyn, we want the young people to buy homes in Brooklyn and to be proud to call it their home. So I don't think we should be telling anyone because of their age or because of their lack of experience that they shouldn't get involved and make more barriers regarding one simple factor that they can't change at the end of the day. And the final thing I did want to touch on is regarding the zoning ordinances. I did just want to give a huge thank you to Director Rowan and Director Butler on your work throughout this project. It's been a lot of time dedicated to this project, and I do appreciate, coming from the urban planning background, this has been, I've been able to nerd out a little bit, but appreciate all the work that you guys have done for this as well, and I do look forward to voting yes tonight, as well as making sure we continue the conversation and educating voters on what this really means and what they're voting on in May. And that concludes my report. Now for Mayor, and most of council again, Mayor Ron Van Kirk.
Thank you, Council President. So on Friday, December 30th, I had the privilege of being sworn in as the fifth mayor of Brooklyn. So today, with last Monday being a holiday today marks the first completed week in this new position. In this past week, I've met individually with each of our directors, with the Brooklyn School Superintendent, Dr. Kalaris, as well as the council president, to hear from each of them about their priorities of how to continue moving our city forward.
of how to continue moving our city forward. The team of people that our city has in government is outstanding. I'm very honored and humbled to be able to serve in, serve with this new, in this new capacity as the mayor of Brooklyn. I will say that transitioning to this office has been and continues to be challenging, but I am very grateful and thankful for the assistance that's been offered to me by so many with this transition. There are a lot of exciting things happening in Brooklyn. We've spoken about many of them tonight, and there'll be many more to come here this year. As you've also heard, Brooklyn does face her challenges, but I look forward to meeting them head-on. Additionally, I do want to publicly congratulate Mayor Gallagher, or former Mayor Gallagher, on her new appointment to this position with the county. I believe she's served Brooklyn well, and I believe that she will continue serving Brooklyn well now at the county level. So I do wish her all of the best as she moves on. Actually got an email from her in her first official capacity today. It was kind of weird seeing that. So I do wish her the best. Additionally, I do want to thank each member of council who have been nothing but kind and have offered very supportive words of encouragement. Each one of you up here, I thank you for that. That, that we worked well together on council, and I very much look forward to your assistance as we make this transition a success. At the start of 2022, no one expected the city to be in this transition, but here we are at the start of 2023. But again, I'm very excited about this opportunity, and I want to thank again the directors and the, staff of this city, as well as council for their assistance in this. Just to address a couple of things that we weren't able to get to in the committee of the whole because of time constraints, and this will kind of partner along with some of the questions that were asked as far as ordinance 2023-1. This is something that Mayor Gallagher had begun work on with Mr. Regus as far as possibly partnering with the city of Bedford when it came to, to this building commissioner. Mike Malice, who's the city manager for the city of Bedford, was here this evening for our committee of the whole to discuss this. I do agree partially with what Mrs. Pucci said. In a perfect world, it would be great to be, be able to have this position as full-time. However, in my time on council, it has, this position has essentially been a revolving door, as it's been very difficult to maintain that position with our current salary structure. Right now, our cap on that position is $100,000 per year. That is our maximum. If this new position does take effect, if we're able to share this with the city of Brooklyn, that will be raised between $110,000 to $130,000, which will, in theory, enable us to attract more candidates to that position because the pay is much higher. I believe the contract is pretty tight as far as how the billing will take place. They will be a Bedford employee. The city will be billed on a quarterly basis for the hours spent in the city of Brooklyn for work being done here, as well as we will split the cost of all the, the other benefits, 50/50, if I'm reading that correctly. Also, this contract only goes through the end of October of this year, and we are able to get out of the contract at any time with a 30-day notice. So it was a very low-risk contract, and I believe the benefits far outweigh the cons to this position. While I respect what Mrs. Pucci is saying, I would like to see this as a full-time position as well. But unfortunately, the market does not dictate that or allow it at this time. And so I think it's a solid plan, and hopefully that council will move forward with adopting that this evening. The second thing is, we have been potentially awarded $100,000 in ARPA funding through the county. There'll be a public work session at the county on January the 18th for us to review this. If we are approved for these funds, which it looks like that we will, these funds will be used to offset some of the overages for the trails here in Memorial Park. Another item of interest is our streets program. In working with Dominion East, Ohio, they are, they are slated to do a service line replacement on two streets that were set up to be done this year on Williamson and Bearwald. They were set to do that up in 2024. And so if we stuck with our original plan, we would redo all the streets on Williamson and Bearwald, redo the sidewalks, redo the curbing, and then DEO would come in next year and rip it up and put new service lines in. And so in working with Mr. Verba, Mr. Regus, and our new engineer, Mr. Henry, we are looking to move Williamson and Bearwald to next year and move next year's streets to this year. And so potentially, if things move forward, this year we would do Tremore, West 66th, Southwood, and Brookwood. Those were all originally slated for next year. And then we'll continue moving forward with Archmere, Elizabethland, and Forest Edge this year. So that just made sense to me that we would switch those, so we didn't have construction going on on those two streets on two separate years. The prices for that, now these will more than likely change. Mr. Henry will be here tomorrow for our staffing to give us updated numbers. But right now, if those changes do go into effect, the capital cost for the streets for this year will be a little over 1.9 million, and next year will be just over $1 million. But again, those will more than likely go up whenever the engineer gives us the new estimates, hopefully tomorrow. They talked about the capital budget adjustments, the $215,000 for the fire station repairs. Mrs. Brian Shaki went over those. Also, the ambulance has been moved to 2023, and the main reason for that is because there's a 30-month lead time on that. And so we want to get that moving because it's going to be over two years before we even see that new, not ambulance, fire truck. Sorry about that. I read that wrong. So it's a long lead time on that, so we want to move it up to this year so we're able to get that in the works. I'm going to address a couple of the comments that were mentioned. Mrs. Pucci just asked Mr., or Chief Paul, to give us a status on the firefighter hiring. I did meet with a director, or Chief Paul, last week. We talked about this, and so I'll let him go ahead and share that since he was asked to get an update on, on that when you give your report. As far as the building commissioner cost, I believe I gave that already with, when I was talking about a second ago. Mr. Regus mentioned that this will potentially be a savings of between $70,000 and $80,000 if we were to go with the shared building commissioner on an annual basis with the city of Bedford. As far as the safety director, I am open to the idea of hiring a safety director. I've actually spoken with both Chief Paul and Chief Milkie about that very thing, and we will be having ongoing, ongoing conversations about that in the future. Also, the tornado shelter was mentioned in the new city center. That is by code. We were required by a high revised code to have that tornado shelter, so that is why that is being put into the new city center. And I believe that is all I have.
Great. Thank you. We do have a few directors' reports tonight. I'm going to start off with Fire Chief Paul.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. Yes, so our, our firefighter list was certified with Civil Service on December 21st. It was the Wednesday before the holidays. The letters went out after the list was certified. I recently got the, the top 10 folks on the list, and my plan is currently to get, they have to sign a waiver before we can start doing some background information on the folks. So the plan is to get that out tomorrow and start getting the, the background information rolling over the next couple of weeks. So I can't do that until these folks sign off on me looking into their background. But the plan is still moving forward to hire three firefighters at this time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
But it is a fire truck.
Yes, I said, I corrected it. Yeah, the second type. Yeah, sorry about that.
Next, we have Police Chief Milkie.
Unfortunately, I have to extend some condolences to the family of our jail administrator, Mike Bellina. His mother, Marsha Bellina, passed away this past Saturday. She's a longtime resident and a longtime Brooklyn teacher. So, from our police department to his family.
Please, Mike. Thank you. Law Director Butler.
Thanks. I only want to address one additional aspect of the public comments with respect of the Charter Commission. And it's really to clarify that the commission members serve voluntarily without pay. Council has not adopted an ordinance that makes that a paid position. And it should be known for the record that Councilman Sellarx is the person who appointed Councilman Tansky's son to the commission. All seven council members get their own selection for the Charter Commission, as you know. The mayor also is permitted to make appointments to the Charter Commission, but these are volunteers. They're not employees of the city. The Ethics Commission has put out lots of guidance with respect to things like nepotism and other conflict of interest rules that govern us as public officials. And all of that guidance suggests that there's no concern over the appointment of family members to volunteer unpaid positions on advisory boards. I didn't address that in my initial comments because I'm not certain that was the upshot of the residents' concerns. But nevertheless, in the event that those concerns were to be taken the wrong way, there's no issue with nepotism or any sort of conflict of interest in the appointment of your Charter Review Commission volunteers. In any event, Councilman Sellarx was the appointing authority here, not Councilman Tansky. Thanks.
Thank you. And finally, we have Economic Development Director Rowan.
Thank you. I just wanted to make some brief comments. There's a rather large real estate transfer that made the paper. I just wanted to, to bring up. So the building and property of 10575 Memphis Avenue transferred on December 12th for just under $54 million. This was an institutional sale from ICP and IRG to Stonemont Financial Group, which is a real estate investment company. So this has no impact on the building tenants, which the tenant is Amazon. The new owner will just assume the lease. It has no impact on their operations. We've gotten some calls here at City Hall, so I didn't know if council had gotten any calls about it, so I just wanted to, to bring up that, what that building sale was. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I did get a text from a friend about it. What's going on? Thank you. So next up on our agenda, we have council confirmations. The request is to confirm the reappointment to the Civil Service Commission of John Pata. This reappointment is a reappointment and a six-year term expiring on January 25th, 2029.
Move to confirm John Pata to the Civil Service Commission.
Thank you.
To confirm the appointment, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes, sir.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Under Old Business tonight, first up, we have ordinance 2022-34, which is up for third reading and adoption. Adopting new Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn and the new official zoning map of the city.
Move to adopt as amended?
Second.
To adopt as amended, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes, sir.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-35 is also up for third reading and adoption, providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Brooklyn, Section 1102.09 of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Brooklyn, creating new public facilities, PF, and parks and open space, PO, zoning districts. Make a motion that we adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-36 is up for third reading and adoption. Submit rezoning of properties to public facilities, PF, to voters.
Move to adopt as amended?
Second.
To adopt as amended, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-37 up for third reading and adoption. Submit rezoning of properties to parks and open spaces, PO, to voters.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes, sir.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-38 up for third reading and adoption. Submit rezoning of properties to general industrial, GI, to voters.
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes, sir.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-39 up for third reading and adoption tonight. Submit rezoning of properties to general business, GB, to voters.
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes, sir.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-40 up for third reading and adoption tonight. Submit rezoning of properties to dwelling house, DH, to voters.
Move to adopt? Second.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes, sir.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-41 up for third reading and adoption tonight. Submit rezoning of properties to retail business, RB, to voters.
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes, sir.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-42 up for third reading and adoption tonight. Submit rezoning of properties to apartment house, AH, to voters.
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes, sir.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-50 is on second reading tonight, authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio, to authorize an amended fee schedule with Life Force Management, Inc., for third-party EMS and ambulance billing, and directing Life Force Management, Inc., to bill non-residents for unreimbursed EMS and ambulance charges. Under New Business tonight, we have ordinance 2023-1. It is on first reading, but administration is looking for it to pass by suspension of the rules. Authorizing the mayor to enter into a shared services agreement between the city of Brooklyn and the city of Bedford for the position of chief building official slash building commissioner. This ordinance allows, we've, we've discussed it multiple times tonight, the mayor and the city manager of Bedford to have a shared service agreement for a building commissioner. Under this ordinance, the position would be a city of Bedford employee, and the city of Brooklyn would reimburse for 50% of the costs, as well as the days worked on a quarterly basis. And this is similar to our setup that we have for our animal control officer.
Maybe recognize briefly?
Yes.
One thing I wanted to mention, although I am past by suspension rules, obviously we're trying to fill this position, but also Bedford's council meets next Tuesday. And so if we're able to, it'd be nice to be able to present this with them so they're able to do the same with those issues.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andy. No, I was just going to ask to be recognized. May I introduce it? May I be recognized? So I think in the agreement, it says that we need a three-month notice, and I know that we're committing until October 31st of this year. So we're really going to have to make sure that we're really taking a look at how it's working, like, earlier. So I just want to make sure that's on everyone's radar. And in our charter for building commissioner, we get to confirm, and I realize that this is going to alter that. Part of that process is they also meet with council for an interview in executive session, and I would ask that we still be afforded that. I think it's very important that we all feel very comfortable with this.
So I've had discussions with the city manager, Mike Malice, on this, and he would have no problem having the candidate go before city council in executive session, as they, as the candidate normally would do in, in the situation that I was a city of Brooklyn employee. So I see annulations of that.
Thank you.
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
I'm going to vote yes reluctantly, just because of the situation that we're in. As I said before, I really don't like it. But I do think having someone is going to be better than having no one or an outside contractor that we did have before. You know, hopefully things will turn around in this part of the industry, and we'll be able at some point to go back to our own employee.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sellarx.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-2 is on first reading tonight, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Cuyahoga County Public Library for the sale of certain real property known as a portion of 7619 Memphis Avenue, permanent parcel 432-34-0009, known further as a city hall site for a construction, the construction of a library. known further as a city hall site for the construction of a library.
I think that's 24, I think you said 34.
I'm sorry, I don't know why I did the same thing earlier. Permanent parcel 432-34-0009.
24.
What is?
Oh, and it's, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 2023-3 is on first reading tonight, but looking to pass by suspension of the rules, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2023. This includes two changes in this ordinance, moving the fire engine purchase up to this budget year. It was originally the 2024 budget year. To get started on it, it is a cost of $950,000 and the fix of the fire station for the water issues that the building is experiencing. This is a total cost of $215,000.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Again, we are asking by suspension of the rules this evening. As I mentioned earlier, because the fire truck, the lead time is so much longer than it typically is, we'd like to get the order placed this year. And then also, of course, the fire station has speaks for itself. It's leaking, it needs to be fixed. So that's why we're looking to get this out a bit so we can get it corrected.
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grotick.